Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, March 3rd, 2025 Swatmore Borough Council Work Session. We'll start with our roll call. Ms. McHale?
Here.
Ms. Garland?
Here.
Ms. Seymour?
Oh, right.
Here.
Mr., oh, Mr. Theryan?
Here.
Ms. Cloud?
Here.
Mr. Booneon?
Here.
Mayor Spiegel?
Here.
Manager Webb?
Here.
And Solicitor Scott?
Here.
Did I miss anybody?
Here.
Who did I miss? You. I'm here.
David, turn on your microphone, please.
Okay, we're gonna start with public comment. Please come up to the microphone, give us your name, your address. Speak loudly, so everybody can hear you and the microphone can pick you up. And please be mindful of the three-minute time.
Is this the only opportunity to speak?
Uh, we have an opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak as well. Hi. Hello. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ross Schuchy. I live at 218 Rutgers Avenue. So I'm a resident here in 630 Yale Avenue, the auto body shop. And I understand that's in an area where you might discuss some other issues. So I wanted to just address, some of the neighbors have met. This, this is a document we've just submitted to Councilperson McHale's committee in advance of her committee meeting. We appreciate, appreciate that Councilperson McHale had a full meeting on this and discussed this. So I'm just handing this out to you all as well, so now it's at this level. And the gist of it was that the neighbors in the vicinity of 630 Yale wish to see the property at 630 Yale, which has been operated as an auto body shop under a grandfathering situation, a residential. So be repurposed to a use that's more consistent with the residential nature of that neighborhood. And we also want the current owner to get fair value for his property and whatever happens with this. And, you know, we, we don't like the continuing use as an auto body shop. And we don't like the idea of a used car sales or a new car sales business there either. That's not consistent with the residential nature. And so this was a request for assistance that we submitted to the committee, and now we're submitting that request for assistance to council directly. I know there've been lots of things discussed about possibilities. Could there be a private fire? Could there be an overlay zone? Could there be zoning change? You know, there's no solution at this point. And, but we need the skill and leadership and competence of everybody on this council to pull together and try and help our community and broader community find a solution for this. So that's simply the request that we are making.
Thank you, Ross.
Okay, thank you very much.
Who else is here to make public comment? Please, come up.
Good evening. My name is Terry May, and I'm the Association Manager for Strathaven Condo Association at 801 Yale Avenue. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the approximately 300 residents within the community and approximately half dozen or so that have attended tonight. We thank you for allowing us to speak tonight on behalf of the application the borough is pursuing for APA, Small Water and Sewer Grant to improve the stormwater inlets on Yale Avenue, one of the main roadways that services the condos. Yale is considered a state highway, and for more than two decades, the condo association has experienced erosion problems during heavy rainstorms. And we've tried over the years to address those issues. In 2011, we spent approximately $85,000 replacing the sidewalk and the curb. There used to be haphazard rocks along the edges, the curb line. We put a new curb in, and that has curbed some of the erosion during the later storms. But when we have more heavier rainstorms, we do get some erosion. It undermines the concrete, the retaining wall, and has led to damage to cars with the force of the water and the material that gets picked up along Yale Avenue. Because we still didn't have any success in getting rid of all of it, we did begin with a land survey and civil engineering firm, Register Associates, and to further investigate it. They felt it was a roadway problem. And we've worked since 2015 with Swatmore Borough Managers, most recently Bill Webb, elected officials to look at the area. We've had various meetings out on the roadway, and the thought was better inlets on there. Right now, there are two M-inlets, and having a C inlet was thought it would help. We had a recent meeting in July involving all the parties, and Bill Webb advised us that he would be making an application in 2025 to improve the stormwater management, and for that, we are very grateful. PennDOT has stepped up clearing the drains, which helps with drainage along the roadway. And so far, we haven't had heavy rains, so we haven't had too much damage. But we are concerned with the spring coming, and we're just here tonight to request that council approve the application that the borough manager is pursuing. And we just thank you for your consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else is here to make public comment? Please, come up.
I'm Dan Snyder, 801 Yale Avenue. I'm just here to second what Terry said. I've, I've been the chairman of the Engineering Committee for six years and lived at the condos for 15. And there is a big water problem there. I've walked up and down Yale Avenue in the rain with my iPhone, making videos and pictures. It's a big problem. And we really appreciate Bill finding an opportunity to maybe get funding to fix it. And we appreciate your attention to it.
Thank you. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Jay Autridas, 434 Drexel Place. And I'm speaking on behalf of my friends and neighbors who are part of the study group on development affordability. One of the things that we've been hearing as we've been going through the comp planning process is a lot of enthusiasm for diversifying the types of housing available in Swatmore, particularly trying to find ways to create more moderately priced housing. And so we're really excited about the discussion that's happening about, you know, thinking that maybe changing zoning or creating a mixed-use overlay or allowing multifamily housing construction. We know that, you know, there are probably challenges to 630 Yale that are unique to that site, and, you know, maybe there's a solution to that. But just more broadly, we're really encouraged by this broader conversation about how we can think creatively about land in Swatmore and thinking about how we can use that to benefit a wider variety of people from different economic backgrounds. So thank you for your discussion about this.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Please come up. Is that Scott?
Hi, I'm, I'm sorry. Scott Richardson, 304 Rutgers Avenue. And obviously, I'm here regarding Yale Avenue and the collision shop. Let me start by saying that, you know, for the almost 30 years that I've been near, Ron has been a great neighbor. The problem is, is that the way things, the way things set is that it's just gonna be another auto body shop. Not sure if they would be in tune with stopping at 5 o'clock Monday through Friday like Ron did. Didn't do weekends, you know, rarely. You know, what kind of operation? And so I look at that, that at best, we can break even, and probably it will be a worse situation. And I would really request that the, that the council look at this as a community thing and how we can just make it, not necessarily, it can't be today, a home. You know, could it be additional housing? I believe a local dentist has approached the borough regarding putting his offices in there. I mean, that is a much, much higher use of that property than an auto body shop. And it's not like this is brand-new. This has been done before. The corner of Chester Road and Yale Avenue. It used to be an auto parts store. Before that, I believe it was a, it was an actual dealership. And Guy Smith, before, I believe he was on council and maybe solicitor, worked with, you know, the, the government to say that it is a higher use to have that be offices. And that's multiple businesses in one location. We're talking about a single, a single business. So, you know, I don't have the answers. I would, I just ask that if you agree that the community would be better off to have some other form of housing or business or whatever that would be of a higher use than a auto body shoe, auto body shop. If you agree with that, then, you know, maybe, you know, go up to our very talented solicitor and say, "This is what we wanna do. How do we get from point A to point B?" And, and then go from there. So that's all I, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment at this time? We do have another public comment session at the end of the meeting or toward the end. Okay, seeing no other hands, we'll close out this public comment section. And just some housekeeping, we will be holding an executive session at the conclusion of the meeting to discuss a potential real estate transaction, and we will not return into full session.
There's also a litigation matter I'm gonna update you on.
Okay, and a litigation matter. All right, so with no further ado, committees, let's start with Environment. David.
Good evening. Before I get to the Environment Report and we take care of a little bit of housekeeping, can we approve in minutes, our last meeting's minutes since we did not meet this month?
Still moved.
Thank you. It's the whole group of us that was there.
Sounds great.
I will get them posted. The EAC met, the Energy, the Environment Committee did not, nor did the Tree Committee. The EAC remains focused on zero waste, particularly pay-as-you throw. The EAC organized and funded a third Umanja Park native planting project. John McKinstry organized a meeting in the box for the Comp Plan for established local environmental groups. The EAC continues to develop an educational program for sustainable yards. Three main focuses are shrinking your lawn, switching from, to electric lawn equipment, and providing a home for wildlife, including leaving the leaves. The EAC and EC, the Environment Committee, continued to examine the possibility and cost of adding an additional EV chargers at the borough's parking lot. The Tree Committee continues to refine potential ordinance and amendments. We'll probably discuss a near-final draft at its March meeting. The Tree Committee, Bill and I are working to get the word out there. There is a PA invasive-replacive program, a tree program, where people can get free trees when they remove invasive species. And more information is coming on this early May event. Bill is gonna put something in the newsletter and probably on website. We're trying to get the word out. Lots of upcoming events, these Environment Committee and the Tree Committee and associated groups are just out there doing so much. And happy Flower Show Week to everybody, where so many of our environmental community makes it happen and volunteers. So we should be proud of Swatmoreans at the Philadelphia Flower Show, could almost be the Swatmore Flower Show. So March 10th is the deadline to apply for the spring tree planting. A list of available trees is available at the borough's website. March 13th, from 7:00 to 8:00 at the PACT, Andrew Gunning is giving a presentation on resilient tree species under climate trade, uh, change. March 15th at 10:00 a.m., there's the Third Free the Trees IV Removal. This event is at the Swatmore Town Woods. There's a Little Concrete Cleanup at, on March 29th at 9:00 o'clock. But if you want a T-shirt, you have to register by March 6th, right? Okay. I do read your email, Sue. There's a Umanja Park planting that I mentioned earlier on April 25th at 3:30. And we'll be coordinating with the schools to get some school kids involved. There's that Free Tree Swap I mentioned on May 3rd. And I'm going to move past the other things, as there, you know, we have a long evening tonight, and just remind people that March is a busy meeting month for us. The March 25th is the EAC at 7:30. March 26th at 7:00 is the Environment Committee, and March 27th at 7:00 is the Tree Committee.
All right, thank you so much. Finance, Cindy.
We did not meet in January, but we will meet the fourth Monday at 5:00 p.m. in March. I'm getting up to speed. I don't have any reason to think that anything is a mess. I think these are going according to plan.
Okay, and you have lots of support, so take your time to get comfortable. Okay.
We, Jill, there's, do they need to approve the January committee meeting minutes? Or do we have to?
Now, do we have, I'm not committing the members?
David, in person.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Move to approve the January minutes?
Second, second. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on to General Government and Jan.
Uh, thanks. Thanks, Jill. General Government did not meet this month, this previous month, and we won't be meeting, have a formal committee meeting this month. However, on Wednesday, the 5th, we will be having what I'm calling a Merchant slash Swatmore Town Center Roundtable Discussion. We had one of those about a month ago, and this is going to be a reoccurring meeting with our merchants and business districts and owners and other key stakeholders to have an open forum, as well as Borough Manager Webb. Other than that, nothing else to report.
So you said this Wednesday, what time?
At noon.
It's at noon, okay.
For your removal.
Okay, great. And Planning and Zoning, Scarlett.
Okay, I've got quite a bit to share this evening. So thanks, everyone, in advance for your forbearance. So here goes. February was a really productive month, and thanks to all those contributors at three key meetings last month. Wednesday, February 19th, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met and gave oversight to the Comp Plan Principal Planner, Sarah Kelly. They handed in the last of the public input comments gathered through meeting in a box, small gatherings across the community that followed the Big Ideas Workshop in January. So now the next phase of creating the plan is to organize that public input by themes and start drafting the plan's goals. Sarah proposed a vision statement and introduced the idea of character types. And that's a way of visualizing the types of buildings and open spaces that are allowed and encouraged in any area of town. So that's just starting to come together, come into focus. That group will have its next meeting virtually via Teams on Thursday, March 20th. Also, on February 19th, later in the evening, the Planning Commission met and heard a similar presentation of status updates on the Comp Plan from Sarah Kelly and shared initial reactions to the vision statements and character type proposals that Sarah shared. They also heard a presentation on community resilience and deliberated on fencing and screening requirements for permanent dumpsters. The Planning Committee, Commission will meet on Wednesday, March 19th this month. The next night, the Planning and Zoning Committee of Council met on Thursday, that was February 20th, and the first agenda item was a report out on the status of Swatmore College's plans for renovation to Cunningham Field at Chester Road and Collin Ave. The college proposes significant upgrades to the site for a more park-like atmosphere with naturalized plantings, ADA walking accommodations, and multi-use athletic fields, including more tennis courts and artificial turf fields. The soonest any revised draft plans would be prepared for public view would be at the March 20th Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Anyone who's interested in that matter, I'd really encourage you to attend. The committee also engaged in a discussion with some of the near neighbors of 630 Yale Ave Auto Body Shop about those neighbors' requests for the borough to take action to change the zoning of that parcel to encourage redevelopment to a residential use or a different commercial use other than an auto repair. And a related idea is asking the borough to buy that property as a path to redevelop it for residential or residential and commercial mixed use. So at the end of the committee report, I'll circle back to these requests for more discussion by full council. But also that evening, the committee heard a presentation made by Robin Schaffler on behalf of a group of residents offering recommendations about community resilience as inputs to the Comprehensive Plan. And the committee invited Robin and her collaborators back during March to share those recommendations within the timeline for the Comprehensive Plan to benefit from those suggestions. So it's a busy evening. And looking forward to the month of March. The Planning Commission will meet here Wednesday, March 19th at 7:00 p.m. Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee meets virtually on Teams Thursday, the 20th. That's at 5:00 p.m. And then that same night, Planning and Zoning Committee will meet in person. There is a Teams link for folks who wanna listen in that way, also on Thursday, the 20th, and that's at 7:00 p.m. So that's the committee report. And so to turn to the agenda items for the evening, the first topic is, this is a rerun, council colleagues, but that's discussion of the Swatmore College Land Development Plan for the campus mail service. So just a reminder, the college seeks to move and expand their package handling mail service, which is located in the center of campus. Both Swatmore and Delaware County Planning Commissions have reviewed this application and expressed favorable recommendations. Yes, Bill? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just always double-checking before I make such a, such a claim. So both Planning Commissions recommend that the building and the driveway design and the storm management plans look okay, and this is a topic for council vote next week. So, Bill, anything to add or update or change?
No, we have positive recommendations from both planning boards.
Okay, so would anyone like to discuss that topic further tonight? We talked about this in a previous series. Okay, let's say no? All right, so that's on for next, for next week. And then the other, I think the heavy discussion topic for tonight takes us back to that 630 Yale Ave Auto Shop. So as Ross mentioned in public comment, approximately 20 residents wrote to me between the zoning hearing and board determination that happened in January and the February Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, asking council to take steps to prevent another auto body shop from buying the property and continuing the non-conforming use. So Bill and many council colleagues were present at that meeting. And we did identify, and Jared Kristin, if I leave anything out, please shout. We identified a few matters that we couldn't resolve, Bob, without your esteemed legal brilliance there in the room. So I wanna just run through those, those places where we literally put on a list on the wall things to ask Bob that we can't answer tonight. Okay, so folks who were there are giving me the nod. I'm like, yes, that's what we did. So, okay. So there are really two or three matters that we wanted to put a finer point on than we were able to last month. The first is, you know, as a point of education to the public, the borough may not rezone only one property, but we may create an overlay district that creates an additional set of directions for an area that's smaller than a zone on our, on our land map. So in this case, residential Zone B. And the borough may write additional rules that would encourage future redevelopment, such as a mixed-use corridor in Yale Avenue. And Bob, my follow-up task for you was, like, how big are we talking about? And that's where the agenda point for tonight came with just a starting point for discussion. And our agenda has a, has typo that I wanna clarify here. If we, if we all drew in our minds a circle on Yale Avenue from Rutgers Avenue to Chester Avenue, including the west side of Chester Ave, across the street, with that pretty blue house and the, and the building that has a variety of commercial uses, right, that's the, that's the area that we're talking about. And Bob, in your assessment, a space like that would be permitted as an overlay district?
Yeah, and I would, I mean, a zone is supposed to reflect some common characteristics. There are four non-conforming buildings within what you just described that have, in some degree, commercial use or the potential for commercial use. The, the auto body shop, the office complex on the corner, the kettle, we'll call the kettle bells building.
Across Chester, sorry.
The outbuilding that's next to the shopping center, there has been a bike shop. There's a corridor there where there has traditionally been a mixture of commercial and residential uses. I think you could do it without adding that northwest corner blue house. That does not kind of fit with it.
Fit the pattern.
And I think that you would not need to include that.
Okay.
Can I ask a question here? So the private home that sits on Redcurves, at the end of Redcurves where you, across from the body shop, can we skip that? Could we skip over that as well?
Across Yale.
The Dicky's home, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think, I think you could.
We could, okay. Because that's.
So we're shaving, we're shaving two corners on the north side as we draw this boundary in our minds or look on Google Maps as we're.
Yeah, I mean, existing conditions are relevant. I think you could skip the north side of Yale till you got to Cornell.
And, and can I ask a question about that? So in my.
The west, the west side.
In my discussions today with Terry and Ross, it was, there was an issue of whether, and this is kind of like, you know, a little, a little bit down the road being afraid of what could, could be, not so much today, but the homes that sit on Yale on the south side as you approach the traffic light at 3:20 in Yale. They're now, I believe, private, residential.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, that's why.
So would a residential or this kind of an overlay allow the demolition of, theoretically allow the demolition of those buildings in favor of a certain type of commercial use?
If you're, it depends on what your overlay is gonna be. If your overlay is gonna be not commercially used, but some, what they call the missing middle, the, the quads and row townhouses and things like that, things that, the small apartment buildings, things of that nature. If that, which is what I understood, the overlay to be kind of a, a.
Sure, as a starting point for discussion, the objective would be higher density, what we call a gentle density, housing options. And some voices have also said, "What about mixed use, where you have some commercial on the first floor with a second or a third or, you know, whatever, whatever space, there's residential there as well?" So would you?
What would you call that?
A mixed use.
But, but mixed use, not any old commercial.
You could decide, yeah, you could make a, I mean, you could decide what that commercial is. And you could say coffee shops, yes, and baked shots, no. And you could, you know.
Like professional offices?
Yeah, professional offices and.
Okay, so we're allowed to pick and choose? Okay.
You have to permit any legal use somewhere in the borough. As long as you've done that, you can then create districts with fewer uses.
And so, Jill.
More select uses.
Your question also seemed like it was pointing to, within this boundary that's in our imaginations, on the parcels where there is a single-family home today. So Bob, in your assessment, may we write these overlay rules in a manner that is responding to what's there in that area that's not residential today? Or must it apply to every single?
If, if you create.
Place, including the single-family homes?
If you create a, a zone, it's gonna have to be uniform with that as well. Now, do you think you can, if I'm, I'm probably skipping ahead to your next question?
Go ahead.
But I think you could, another way of skinning this cap is you could revise the non-conforming use of section of these zoning ordinances to... Right now, there is, most zoning ordinances allow the change of one non-conforming use to a less intensive non-conformable. Ours does not. It, as was why the, the auto sales shop had to come for term hearing. Under a lot of municipality ordinances, that would have been permitted as a, as a less intensive use. You could amend that section so that non-conforming commercial properties, you could define a less intensive use, which would be those mixed uses or medium, we'll call them medium-density residential uses. residential uses.
Does that, because that's.
In that instance, in that instance, you're not hitting the existing single-family residents. You're only hitting auto body shop, the corner, the kettle bells, the, you know, the, those.
Okay. And it was raised also today.
At the gas station maybe, you know, down at, down at Fairview.
Could we?
There's, there's, um, yeah.
It, it looks like B on the map.
We need to think about institutional uses as well, simply because there's been some discussion about who might be interested. I mean, I'm talking about some property that we don't own, so forgive me for being, making that assumption, but should a buyer come forward and that be an institutional purchaser, we wouldn't want to foreclose that as a possibility.
But the owner could work within the terms that you just described, if they're agnostic, if who owns the building.
Yeah, I mean, if an office, I mean, an institutional, where presumably one for office or for like.
So that, yes, that.
You could, you could create, I mean, you could define that as a less intensive use.
Okay.
So you're saying that if it's a non-conforming use, we could amend our zoning code that allows for less intensive uses, whether the multi-housing, mixed-use, lesser, less obtrusive commercial uses.
Yep.
Institutional uses, whatever. Okay, that's, that's an interesting concept.
I just have a question. Is that just for that zoning overlay or that would be for the entire borough?
I think it would be for the whole borough. And I am trying to think, commercial non-conforming uses, the gas station maybe, we're not sure if that's a non-conforming. And I'm not aware of any others for non-conforming. What is, Dave Tom's property?
It is residential.
I think it's residential.
So non-conforming lot size?
But we're talking about uses.
But it, it seems like it's potentially opening a can of worms to do that rather than do an overlay, because then it's affecting the borough in ways we may not be able to see in this moment.
Yeah, that's why, like, there must, there could be unintended.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but just because in the moment, hold on, just because in the moment we're not thinking of all the possible ways that other areas of the borough could affect it.
I think you could give your own judgment. I think we could identify what, what, what the properties are currently non-conforming use.
And you would expect a pretty short list. And, okay, so just to, to rein this back in, that we're still in the, filling in the blanks from last time, and one more, go in the blanks. So these are the non-sequencers that we left as open-ended from last meeting, ready to switch gears to another one?
We could possibly, we could possibly do both, right?
Yes.
Do an overlay and do what you were talking about, the zoning.
Separately, separately.
Right, it can make sense to me to do both, so that there are more options for some of those commercial properties along Yale, for the mixed use, for more housing, more density.
Whereas a residential would have some additional rights, but not separate.
Right. Yeah, just throwing it out there, that there's not one for the other.
And, okay, and so then, again, apologies for the non-sequencer, but then the other significant, so that was, that was two for one, that Bob just gave us there around what would an overlay, what would some of the framing terms and limitations and opportunities of an overlay district be? The other piece was questions about, about environmental impact of the business operations that are currently there at the body shop. And so there was a question that, that came forward in the committee meeting where someone was asking, what, what rights and what tools the borough has to ensure environmental safety and compliance with the law at the body shop as it is? So, Bill, I know this one is really for you, but I'm going to do my best, and then you're going to fortify my response here. If anyone has any reason to believe there's hazardous waste in the curbs, in the curbside trash, that's something to call the borough and say that there's a concern about solid waste. If there's a concern about air quality, that's something to call the DEP, the state around air quality. And we don't have the right to require an environmental inspection or public disclosure of such an inspection without, you know, just because. And, you know, we want to be really conscientious not to make any unsubstantiated claims about what is or isn't happening on that parcel. So, I just think that, we left it as an open question in the committee meeting, what, if anything the borough ought to be doing or might be doing to ensure that that is, that current use is meeting environmental standards and all. So anything you would change or add to that?
So, in my experience, a facility like that is serviced by licensed contractors who come in and remove the oils, the greases, and liquids from the property, so, and I, I wouldn't believe that that would have been an issue there. And buyer, it's always buyer beware, and I think any buyer who's going to buy a property that was commercial is going to do an environmental study of the property. There's no tax on that property to our knowledge either.
Right.
So with regards to that, I don't, there, there's nothing that we would do unless someone called me up and said, hey, I saw so-and-so dumping. Well, then we would, then we would.
Can I, can I add something here? Again, today I learned that the property owner there has been very, very responsible with environmental waste and was, I think there was something reduced into the public sphere that was inaccurate, that he's very upset about, which is that he wasn't taking care of his waste. So I just want to put that out there, that there's no, there's no evidence, there's nothing to substantiate anything that's going on at that property that is not fully compliant with the law.
Understood, okay. Thank you for that. So, so those are the loose ends, which brings us to today. And so Joe mentioned at the top of the meeting, any discussion of the borough buying the property that happens in private, that happens in executive session, and that is to preserve a negotiating position for the borough as a buyer and not having a competing buyer listen in. So that's as far as that topic goes in this portion of the meeting for tonight. But the other request related to this property is the request to influence how that property can become a residential or a mixed commercial and residential use rather than an auto body shop through zoning tools and trying to make it more profitable to a future owner to build something else there. And so presently, a single or a twin house or a continuation of the auto body shop, those are the options of what's allowed there. And so it seems to me, just for the benefit of council here, that we can break apart a decision next week about if or how to rezone this boundary that we just kind of talked through, you know, can, question part one, what is the boundary? Question part two, what's allowed in the boundary? And so that could look like decision points, including higher density, lower setbacks from the curb, whether the rules apply only to non-conforming uses or to every property in the area, maybe other places, and I was kind of started brainstorming inside conversations. So then, are those permissions, so now here's number three, and there's only a number four. Number three, are those, are those allowances permitted by right or are they permitted by conditional use? Meaning, if someone wants to make use of any of those rules in the overlay, the new permissions that we would be talking about, they've come before council.
Or by special exception, which is the equivalent of, if you go before the zoning hearing, you won't get.
So either way, you have, there's a, there's a yield.
There's a further approval, proper, another approval step, but in both cases, a, a special exception or conditional use is presumed to be permitted, and you would view a party granted unless some neighboring, neighboring programs could prove there was some adverse impact would have to the property.
Understood. Okay, so that's a decision point for us, if we're firming something up. And then, would we want to move forward on this now? Or would we want to move this forward with this after the comp plan is adopted? That anticipated time is July. I think that that's been the last decision point at this kind of high-level strategy direction for now. So, how does that sound, kind of those four pieces? Do people have initial reactions or questions or want to take a different approach?
All right, just one question. If council did move forward with, with a change in zoning overlay or otherwise, Bob, does that rescind the existing non-conforming use for that building?
No.
So it could still be a, I mean, the auto body.
Absolutely. We cannot make a legally existing non-conforming use to auto bodies. They can keep it to the end of time.
Okay, yeah, that's, that was my intuition.
What are the reactions? Do folks want to accept this boundary as we just brainstormed it and try to?
I don't, I don't understand it yet.
Okay.
I think I need to see.
Okay.
I like both, but I've already said that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts. What do you, what do you think, Joe?
Well, yeah, sure, I like both, but I want to see what that would look like, like what's the, you know, taking it to the extreme, what would that look like?
Yeah, I would like to explore both as well.
Yeah, but I also wanted to know from Bob, in your experience, by right versus conditional use, we talked a little bit about that, but what, what do you think is, because council's in the future, you know, it just depends on the whims of whatever.
I, I think you could find there's some uses that are, that you can define sufficiently that you might want to protect them by right. A four-unit apartment building, for example. But that mixed-use building, I think you might want to be able to preserve the ability to see what, that, that's a little more loosey-dewy. You could find that for mixed use, not something that was anticipated, if you want to build it in front. So I think you could have some uses be by right and some require a special exception. I much prefer special exceptions to conditional uses. I think it's better to have the zoning hearing board hear it because, just like with the condos and with some other applications we've had here, when you're hearing conditional use, you cannot express your opinions. You have to listen, you can't be telling people in the teller off about what you, you know, you're sitting in a judicial capacity. And you, I think it's hard for you to separate. And I, I think it's better to have a separate body that is going to act in judicial capacity and you know the legislators and express your opinions on the application.
Would you, I'm sorry.
I like that idea.
Could, could you remind us of the, the standard for special exception? As a, like Bill and then the zoning hearing board, the way that this.
Like, how do you get your special exception? If you, can I even take it one step back of context to get to your question? So, and if folks want to pull, like residential B, you can Google it right now just to see what's in the text. You can say Swarthmore Borough, zoning residential B. And what, what comes up in the current text is a list like you just described. Here's what you can do in this part of town. And there, the first list is things you can do, general uses. You can have a single-family home, a two-family home, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. You can have a swimming pool. And then there's a list of, you could do these, the following things if you get the special exception. And then there's, you could do these other last list of things if you get the conditional use. So Bob, that's what you're describing, making another list of those kinds of things, so we don't have to be all or nothing. So I presented it as a flatter decision point, we can put more nuance on that. So, your question.
Like the reviews, like the legal.
If you're going for this, if you're going for something that's on the special exception list, what's your experience as the applicant?
You would have to file an application, pay the, a go-to hearing. And you would probably hire a lawyer to do it, and it would take six, you'd have sixty days, and the borough would have to hold a hearing over the sixty days.
So this is different than, than what Bill decided on 6/31st? That was not.
That was not a special, that was a, they, they.
Deal.
Decision, which obviously, it runs the same course sixty days from the application date, and then after the hearing, a written decision must be provided.
Okay, but that was a different question.
So, the zoning hearing board hears two things.
It's the same, it's the same process as if they needed a hearing. It's time-wise on application. It's just an easier thing to get. It would be an easier legal standard to get a special exception approved than those to get a hearing's approved.
I have a question and a comment. Question is, does an overlay change the potential tax liability for any of these property owners?
Not, no, not, it would not change their assessments.
Unless they, unless they make a change.
Unless they make a change. I mean, it's conceivable that in a future reassessment, they would be deemed to be more or less valuable because of what's permitted. So it could have a, an impact in the future, wouldn't immediately.
My other observation is that, and I, I don't know all the history, but it seemed to me that the commercial uses on this, these two blocks were replacing residential. So you could say that, I think, I think that's true. So do, do we really want to encourage more commercial here when we might want to reclaim the neighborhood part, wouldn't maybe more dense housing, but?
I think that's a fair kind of strategic decision point that a majority of council has to give direction on. It's quite different, and maybe that's a place also in this next month, when, if there's something that we want to see, like a text-based revision, Bob graciously, within his professional scope, could be the primary author of that, and he would need to know, are we trying to solve for mixed use or are we trying to solve for residential before trying to get into writing anything?
Yeah, and we could also just kind of put together an options list, you know, like here are things, this, here's something you could consider, you know.
So you write a longer list of by right, special exception and conditional use list, and then when we come back together in next month's series, we could, we could be striking or shifting where we, which of those three buckets, do you think any of those activities are used for? And maybe, do you have a, do you have a view that you want to state now that you think we should be doing ahead of one direction or the other?
I'm still formulating, but I've also been listening to a lot of the comprehensive plan.
Right.
Imagine Swarthmore, and over and over, we hear about the need for more multifamily housing, townhouses. Really haven't heard a lot of cry out for more commercial.
Sure.
We want support for existing town center commercial.
Right, which this would not be.
Which is, this is not, and what, you know, what dynamic does it set up? We've heard about traffic issues on Yale here. I, I think all this goes in there.
So Bill made a statement a meeting or two ago about the math problem of, of multifamily plan. And so it's, how do you pay for the design? How do you pay to do the work? And in one way, it's not really a subsidizing of, but it really, if you can conceive a commercial or like light commercial on a first floor, that would then allow for the residential to be a second, third floor, whatever, that's one way. Because I think when you think about affordable housing, it's not like the fancy condos where, you know, it's a home run for the developer, presumably.
And, and I think, and Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, one, one way that you could address that, you know, the, like a commercial takeover with adding that mixed use is to put under the design criteria for the, and the, and the design standards that within that zoning district, you could lay out things that kind of restrict with the lot size so that you could say, okay, well, we know how big 630 Yale is, you can really set it up so that only something with a mixed use could go on that property based on the design criteria that's set forth.
Yeah, you could.
That protection.
But you could, that's true, and it would work for existing conditions, but if people were to aggregate lots, you know, you could, you could develop.
And there's not.
Tore down the, and then accumulate enough adjacent property to have a bigger.
But I'm also thinking about existing property owners, people who have their homes, who like, like just the lot and, and the neighbors of other houses and, yeah.
Right, and don't want to live next to a complex or don't want to live next to a triplex, is that what you mean? Or don't want to live next to a bakery or whatever else.
Commercial, yeah. That it, that it changes the character that way a lot.
I think that, so that area right now is very mixed. I live in that area, so, you know, it's not that every. So, you know, it's not that every residence has a coffee shop or a worshiped it. But, you know, there's, there's enough businesses over there to make it feel different than like Swatmore Hills already. We had talked a little bit about density bonuses, you know, trying to craft something like that that would allow for a mixed use, more, more space for human beings to live.
And I know that, I mean, I'll, I'll put this out there. My thoughts with the mixed use was, was potentially a college use. Because they are in such a bind for housing for the visiting faculty or young faculty that they've hired. My thought was that, you know, you put that first floor, first and minor office space that's only occupied during the day. And then you build, then you put in maybe, you'll allow maybe, even say maybe six small studio-sized parking units. That could help, help that with them, with that problem. And then we, we know that the neighbors would get a quality building because the college does everything, you know, to the, I mean, they're, they're out of their problem.
Was their discussion on height?
Not explicitly.
I guess I would be interested to hear from the neighbors and the residents of that, of that block. I mean, what if, you know, you talked about a density bonus and encouraging development of, of high quality. I work with developers every day, and typically it's, it's a question of how many units and spaces where the land is constrained, its, its height. So I just wonder if the neighbors, is that better than a body shop? But I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Sure, right. So if you try to imagine a neighbor that's a three-story building, imagine a neighbor, a four-story building, imagine a neighbor that's a two-story building. And that could be part of, that could be part of the instruction that's created in an unplanned district.
I'm sorry. I would hope that as we move forward, and I think there's a lot to consider here. But that, everything we hear over the last several years about rezoning and what we should be thinking about is form-based zoning. A lot of what we're discussing about here tonight isn't. We're saying, okay, let's put new rules and regulations on what somebody can use rather than say, all right, as long as you are within your four walls, you could have four large units in there, or six smaller units, or eight even smaller units in there. So I want to make sure that we allow some market determination, some individual creativity here, that we don't impose a will today that just doesn't work in all situations. That we allow things to work themselves out. As far as commercial uses, I mean, we hear again through our comp plan, the need for third places. You know, Jill would say, wouldn't it be great if there was a coffee shop on every quarter? You know, we know where, where her addiction's like. But, no, whatever they may be, I'd like to, if we were going to have professional offices, I'd like to see them on a second or third floor rather than on a first floor to create some vibrancy. As you walk down, I'm a big city kid. As you walk down a big city street, there are things that catch your attention. There are things that you can walk into. There are things that you can stop them by. Rather than just, you're walking down past one residential and plot versus another and seeing all the differences, the flowers, how the gardens are maintained, all those types of things. One's not bad, one's not good. They're different. And I, I think some ability to have both in our own borough may be good for us and support some of the more affordable housing we'd like to see.
And so, so what if we did this? What if we said, you know, we have a starting point for a boundary for all of us to take with our thoughts from this evening. We have what is probably a much more expansive and varied list of potential worthy overlay uses that Bob, if you really gave us a long list to imagine striking or limiting in the March Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Which, Bob, that makes your deadline earlier than what you and I discussed. I just had that bright idea sitting right here. That's, that's for Thursday, the 20th, but really, we circulate material St. Patrick's Day, Monday, the 17th, so. Right? So, right, so, right, we could see, we could, we could get the flavor and we could have more open community conversation about what we'd like to see in the overlay or not in that committee meeting. We could firm that up in advance of the March, the April council series. Really is when we would be able to get moving on this. And thank you to the Planning Commission colleagues who are here tonight and who have been following along closely along the way, anticipating that we would ask their, their input if any of this gets any length. So, does anyone here at the DIAS see a way that we can take this any further for tonight? Just kind of had this first exchange. David, what else are you thinking?
Yeah, I, I, I just don't want to lose what Kristin had brought up. That in addition or separate from the overlay was the very interesting idea that Bob brought up of revising nonconforming uses and allowing them to be transformed into less offensive nonconforming uses.
So let's see that as a, as a separate but complementary activity. So really, Bob, we are asking for follow-up on two work products. One that is in this small boundary we've been talking about, and the other that we're all picturing. You know, where would that be relevant in town? I think this is a matter. Does that sound appealing?
Yeah, and there's also, it's not the third, but it's part of the first problem to solve, which is the reason we're here, which is 6/30 Yale. So while we can't do anything to change the use that exists or to prohibit the use that exists, we can expand it with an overlay, making it more attractive and potentially attract additional interested parties. So it's not, it's not that nothing can happen by us that will allow that use to be something different. It's just that we can't take away that use that is, is underway now. So I want us to, you know, try to solve that problem as part of problem one.
Well, hopefully that we're talking about it, the owner will realize that and may see that his property is hopefully becoming more attractive to more uses. And he might want to wait before he does anything to see what we do.
Right, understanding. Okay. So I think that's as far as we take this topic. And then, so next week, we likely would not have meaningful substantive advancements. Right, it's really coming back to the March Planning and Zoning Committee meeting. Again, that's Thursday, March 20th at 7:00 PM, in person and on Teams. And then we are, are shooting for Monday, April 7th and Monday, April 14th, full council meeting series, when we would be looking at text about the less intensive nonconforming use. And then separately about the permissions of the zoning overlay on that Yale ad stretch. So Joel, then I think that's as far as we get for tonight. Thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your, like, real thought on this.
Yeah, thanks to you for holding these great meetings and to me, because it's complicated, a lot of voices. Public safety, Kristin.
Thank you. We did meet this month. We talked about, the first was the budget for the fire association. We decided that we would go ahead and cut them a check for this next quarter for the previously agreed upon amount. I don't have that amount in front of me. Do you have it?
I do have it, but I've already given Nancy the number. I think it was 133, 333. There were threes in it. I was getting too vague on.
It hasn't changed from what we thought it had, and I apologize if I missed. So we talked about, in their budget, the fire chief had put in his original budget a 6% increase for the department. And that was not salary increase or...
Salary.
Salary increase.
Salary.
For the part-time, yeah, for the employees. And that caused him to come back to us when he remembered that that was in there because he's concerned that his, he might have more folks working and it might raise his budget and it might then cost us more money further down the road. So we had a big discussion on that, and they, they have a good, what, eighty, she just wanted to do, eighty-some-odd percent staffing level right now, which is...
Eighty-three.
Which is eighty-three, okay, eighty-three percent staffing level, which is great, I think. It just keeps going up, even though our volunteers are going down, but we have a lot of part-timers that are working, so that's good. Another hot topic that we talked about was safety concerns at the farmer's market after what happened in New Orleans. The farmer's market and town center came to us and wanted to know what we could do to provide some safety at the farmer's market. And Ray and Bill got back to me, and we were looking at some barricades that are movable barricades to block traffic from the two entrances and to the Borough Park parking lot. And they're $3,000 apiece, and we would need six. So we're thinking we could get just as much protection from these parking cars in front of that space. We weren't able to talk about that during committee because we didn't have the pricing back yet. So, sorry, this is news to you. I was able to tell Jenna. So that's something for us to think about. And then we also talked about a noise ordinance. I had no idea that we had a noise ordinance. I knew that we had an hours of construction ordinance, but we do have a noise ordinance. And we also have police officers that don't drive around with decimal meters. And our current noise ordinance talks about decimal meters, so we want to clean up that language. And we had a proposal sent to us, or, I'm sorry, a draft sent to us, and it was very much in the weeds. And we want to make sure that we have something that Bill agrees with and that is in agreement with our police chief as well for the enforcement. So we're still working on that. We're going to take another month and then come back to you with a draft, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
He comes from a resident who complained, so I'm pissed.
And I'm also surprised, we, we mentioned dogs barking several times throughout our ordinance, not just in one place. So I'd like to look at that, too. As we're cleaning this up, we might as well look at the dogs barking as well. I'm not right.
He's looking at me.
No, 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 no. So, there's a, there's a town in New Jersey that says that they, that dog can't bark more than, you know, ten consecutive times in a minute or something.
I keep telling you.
I just don't want to get that in the weeds of, of a noise ordinance. And I don't want to put that on our police officers, and it's just, not, it doesn't seem worth it.
And I had asked you to look at leaf blowers because that's the complaint that I keep getting.
That was discussed when we met with this listener, so thank you. Yeah, we're working on it. And so it's my committee report. And Bill, on these, are we making a decision on these points? Or just, is this, we're still discussing the vehicle and...
These are just back on, these are just back on. Well, the municipal's a new discussion. The Resolution 2 of 2025 was the purchasing of the car that Bill had mentioned that we had purchased early.
Right. Couldn't we make it, I thought we could make a decision on that tonight?
Well, just to keep it aligned with our traditional...
Second meeting.
Work at the work session, legislative, legislative session.
Okay.
We'll do that next week.
Any questions about the car? No? Okay. So, discussion to place the 2019 Dodge Charger, Charger, is this Charger on municipal?
Uh, Dodge Charger. Yes.
Any discussion on that? Yeah, it's great idea.
What, what we'll need to do next week is determine what we want to set our minimum bid at. So that'll be a discussion point, just that we need to set our minimum. Ray and I have discussed it. We're going to recommend setting the minimum bid at $2,000. The car has a blown engine, probably has its worth $2,000 in parts, at least. So I hope that we'll get $4,000. But I don't want to discourage bidders from bidding by setting that threshold too high. And like I said, it'll probably be a taxi cab, so go to New York or Chicago, you may be riding in our car again someday.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And the final item for public safety is conversations with the surrounding communities that are using our ambulance service. Have you reached out to those communities?
No. So that is the, that is the discussion point, is I'm, I mean, that's, no, I'm not going to do that without direction from council because it becomes a political thing.
Right. So they're not forced to give us money for using our ambulance service. But Bill was hoping, and again, this probably wouldn't be revenue that we would see this year or maybe at all ever. But we're basically just approaching those communities and asking for some support because they use our ambulance service.
So the, the keys that I would like to target a conversation with are Morton and Rutledge, right off the bat. Because those communities are high-volume users of our ambulance. Their fire companies do not have an ambulance service. The other, the other high user of our ambulance is Springfield. However, Springfield has an ambulance, and they service us when our ambulance is not available and vice versa. So I don't think it would be prudent on our part to go to Springfield and say, help us offset our costs.
Could you explain, one of you guys explain, because this is the question that I have, why the bills aren't being paid by the, the end user?
Well, that's, so, which is one more municipality that I want to engage in a conversation with, will be none of the Providence. However, since we're going through that process of the fire consolidation, I think it's best to maybe hold off on having a conversation with them until we finalize that process. Back to the billing. So the, the problem is, some insurance companies actually direct pay to the, their insurer. And then they pop the money.
If I call an ambulance, my insurance might issue me a check.
They'll issue you a check, and they don't send it to the, they don't send it to the ambulance company. The ambulance company submits the bill, they, they send it to the patient, and the patient says, oh, free money, puts it in the pot.
So it's not customary to bill that the individual?
They, yeah, but it's hard to collect.
Okay.
They are responsible for it. They should hand it over. They don't. So you could, yeah.
That's terrible.
Collection agencies hire a collection of lawyers. There is an effort to change the law to require the insurers to pay directly to the service provider. If you see Tim Carney or Jenna Marrow around robbing them for it, it would be, it'll go, there's a lot of money that is being diverted because they don't pay directly to the ambulance.
The other problem with the ambulance service is that they may not be able to bill for everything they go through. Depending on the amount of care they provide. So we, there's two different types of ambulance services. There's BLS, which is basic life support, which is what we provide. And there's ALS, which is the advanced life support. So around here, media has ALS. With the basic life support, you know, Conlin says that if we give medication, things like that, we can, we can bill for things like that. But just going and someone calls and hurts their foot, and they don't take that ride to the hospital, well, the ambulance doesn't get paid to show up for that call.
Right. And so what do you propose? Is this fee for service direct on calls or is this a flat overhead charge to the, to the neighboring community? Because I'm thinking about, right, a lot of times the ambulance goes out, and if you decline the ride, that's it, you go back to the house. There's nothing billable.
My, my initial thought is a flat fee. They can tell us, yeah, no, we're not paying, and they're not required. And the reason I'm even bringing this conversation forward is I see our, I see our costs go up, and we are footing that bill. And when we had, when I was on the meeting with the county regarding the bankruptcy with the hospital, one of the, one of our, one of my manager colleagues and another council commissioner from another town had raised, their argument was that their community's ambulance was out of their town more than it was in their town. And what is the county going to do about this? And the county was like, well, we're not going to do anything about it. Bill, Bill the other municipal, Bill the people. So that's, unfortunately, with their license, they can't say, oh, sorry, Morton, you're not contributing to our ambulance service, we're not coming. But what I can encourage people to do is with the...
Because the county dispatches the ambulances. And so, like, just on background, why does the Swatmore ambulance ever leave Swatmore for these neighboring communities?
So there's a, so there's a call there. So if we may be Morton, Rutledge... So if we may be Morton, Rutledge, we, we may be their first call. Nether, we may be the first, the first call depending on where it is because Nether's broken up by, they, some of Brookhaven's ambulance covers Nether as well as we do. So depending on if we're the first run or not, we get the call. If our ambulance isn't available, then someone banks it up. I forgot what my other thought was.
So, so you were coming back to, I think, sorry for interrupting your train of thought. Right, that, so a flat fee helps us recoup some of these costs, but it doesn't get us out of the obligation to respond to these calls.
Correct.
So people need to understand that as background to the decision meeting.
They're obligated regardless because of their state license. Their, their license from the Commonwealth requires that. And there's no mutual aid agreement, whereas with fire, we have that mutual aid, police, we have that mutual aid. With the ambulance, it's all based on license. So, you know, this is just us going to these other municipalities and the way I'm, the way I'm going to bridge the conversation is, we know your community likes to receive this service, but it's coming to a point where we're, we're absorbing this cost and there's going to be a point where Swatmore cannot absorb this full cost. We need your help. Because if we don't have your help, well, there might be a time where ambulance isn't here because we can't afford to staff it at levels that we're doing now. Well, that wakes people up. I mean, and the last, I mean, we're not, we're not threatening anyone, we're just saying, help us. Help us help you.
So are you looking for an action from us to empower you to make this call?
Yes, I, I am. And that does not have to be tonight. You guys think about it and then it'll be on for decision point next week.
Bill, have you been able to gather information from our fire association on call, from the cost of our ambulance, on the compensation we get from insurance companies, all that type of a thing, to see where this really is? So if somebody says, well, what do the numbers look like?
So we, we don't have all of that information exactly. We don't even know what it, what it costs for a call or breakdowns like that. I'd not ask Conlon to do that. I mean, I think they can tell us, you know, where they're recouping money at. And one problem they have is, you know, they're dealing with insurance companies. And just like, you know, the, the insurance company didn't go to medical school and, but they're the one telling a doctor, you know what, if that, that's only worth twenty, twenty dollars, that's all we're paying. And that, same with the ambulance. The insurance company says, yeah, you billed four hundred, now that was only worth a hundred dollars. Which, I'll put a plug out for everyone, the, the ambulance company sends out a membership. I would encourage you to buy a membership to the ambulance. If you were transported by the Swatmore ambulance and you get a, and your insurance company only covers part of that, well, they eat the remaining cost as if you're a member. So I would encourage anyone who receives the membership drive with the ambulance, you become a member. You never know when you're going to need that ride on the bus.
So we do, so the fire association does bill end users for, for services not reimbursed to them by the insurance company.
They do. That doesn't mean they're going to get you.
Or that they're going to turn the check over, right?
Well, if the insurance company mounts, and that's what Conlon, thanks Conlon brought up in our meeting, is that the, the law needs to be changed, that these insurance companies aren't paying the patient. They should be paying the, the new set the bill.
That's a brilliant point, but clearly this is a terrible system. Sounds awful.
We've seen, we've seen evidence of that.
Do you ever want to go into a business to fail, start an, because it is a not, you will not make profit. Well, having friends in the business, I, I, you know, it can be done, but it is a difficult situation and if we need help in gathering better statistics and data, I've always made myself available to you and the fire association and such.
That's all I have.
All right, Kristen, thank you so much. Public Works, Jared.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start our committee report with reviewing our annual goals. We did discuss this at the February work session. However, we may all recall that we didn't meet in December and January, so that was just a cursory list. We've discussed this as a committee, so I want to come back with this as our formal list. First and foremost on our goals is a restroom structure at Little Crump Creek Park. We'll talk a little bit about that in a second. We have a medium-duty truck that we have to replace for the public works department. At the public works recycling center, we have a number of small projects that we'd like to fix in the building. Most pressingly, the fence should probably be replaced.
It's budgeted.
It's budgeted. We also have interest from a local life scout who may turn a beautification of the front of the recycling center into his Eagle Scout project. So that is tentative, but it is a goal of ours to revitalize the, the darkened out facing portion of the property. In terms of Borough Hall improvements, we also discussed this. There's a generator that we potentially replace. We've gotten a number of complaints about the floors in the lobby and Bill has already done research on what remediation might cost. And Bill also mentioned that we're going to have a concert series out in front of the Borough Hall in the amphitheater, so the public works department will assist in that revitalization of that space. I think a lot of us forget that the public works committee is actually the public works parks and recreation committee, if you'll abbreviate it. And I want to really tie in that parks and recreation park a lot more this year. So we're looking for suggestions for how we can improve all of our parks and through our comprehensive plan engagement, I've heard a lot of excitement around having a dog park space somewhere in the borough. So that's definitely one of the ideas we're examining. We're also going to continue to support zero-waste initiatives, including continued evaluation of styrofoam recycling and disposal as well as composting programs. And we're also going to be increasing our recycling education opportunities for residents, be that through signage at the recycling facility, potentially new content on our new website when that comes along, as well as mailers, we're actually going to be trying to mail it later this month, which we'll talk about next. That concludes our goals. Regarding the waste survey that we discussed last month, June Isaito, who is our research fellow at Swatmore College, reported back to, actually reported back today now that our waste survey is completed. We received almost five hundred and fifty responses, which is a lot for a borough of this size. So thank you very much to June and Jennifer Fluger for their, their work on the survey as an administering survey as well as all of those that participated. So now we have a, a good idea of where people stand in terms of a pay-as-you-throw program for our waste. June also spoke with officials over in Rutledge to discuss their new hauler as well as their use of DEP 902 funds to further their recycling initiatives. And just as an aside, for those of you who might recall, we had a DEP 902 grant we received ourselves last year for a one-man leaf vacuum truck, which we received and took delivery of on February fourteenth, so it was a nice little Valentine's Day gift for the borough. So we may be able to leverage those grant funds in the future, but that's what we used them for last year. There will be a mailer that's coming around to borough residents regarding June's research, our results from the survey and more information on pay-as-you-throw in the coming weeks, so be on the lookout for that. Next up, we discussed the phase three planting at Imoga Park. Jonathan Kinstry from the EAC came and discussed the specifics of the project. They have a thousand dollars in funding to purchase around one hundred and twenty-five native plants. Again, this is phase three. If you didn't participate in the earlier plantings, I highly recommend that you do. It's April twenty-fifth, it's going to be a three-thirty and the goal with that time is that we'll be getting families and students out of school and potentially it's a good family volunteering event for Earth Week. So please put that on your calendars. We also discussed, we revisited, I should say, styrofoam disposal options for the borough. Our plan for this month is Mr. Tipping from Public Works Department is going to travel to a styrofoam recycling facility to figure out what exactly we would need to provide in terms of a clean load for them to accept and all the details surrounding that and what a drop-off would look like. Right now, we only have two residents that are interested in such a program and we're soliciting input as to if there's a broader need in the borough. At the very least, we're interested in pursuing a drop-off event, so this could, rather than being something monthly or a permanent disposal receptacle at our public works facility where space is already limited. We would, we're examining some sort of drop-off event that would be supervised to make sure we're getting clean recyclable styrofoam and then we can dedicate a day to haul that up to our, our vendor for that. And we're also very early in this process, we can, there's potential we can explore partnerships with Swatmore College or other volunteer organizations to organize such an effort. So we'll report back next month with more information on that after we've made a trip up to the recycling facility. And last but not least, very excited to provide a substantive update on the Little Crump Creek Park restroom structure. Arum from the Swatmore Centennial Foundation provided committee members with project briefing during our last meeting. The SCF completed a needs assessment with the Friends of Little Crump Creek Park to determine what exactly we would need out of the structure in order to support their efforts more, most fully. And the prefabricated structure, which is ADA accessible that they selected, meets all of those needs as described in that report. The estimated cost for the structure is two hundred and five thousand dollars. The borough can purchase the structure through the Bi Board Purchasing Consortium for a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Now, I've had some concerned residents calling me up and saying, why are we spending a quarter million dollars on a restroom structure? That's a very fair point. But the borough is not going to be spending a quarter million dollars on a restroom structure. We are very fortunate that the Swatmore Centennial Foundation has donated, or is willing to donate and fund the full hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the structure. So that leaves an estimated between ten and eighty thousand dollars for the site preparation. We are estimating that to be around sixty. Bill has also spoken with Swatmore College, who is providing an additional thirty thousand dollars for the project. So the exciting part about this is, and again, this is still a sixty thousand dollar estimate, if our site preparation ends up being in the thirty thousand dollar range, then the project is already funded. So our work this week, or I'm sorry, this month and going forward is to get a little bit more granular with the project. We haven't picked fits or finishes for the exterior of the structure. The location is not a hundred percent set and that's going to be highly dependent on where the sewer lines are, are located in the park and where we can tie in. But for, a total project costs around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right now, we're estimated that we're going to be covering about thirty thousand dollars in site costs, but again, if we get creative with that site preparation, the project may very well already be funded. We're discussing with public safety any potential concerns or hazards that are, that could come about and in the coming months, we'll also discuss with the public works department a maintenance plan of that facility. And just to provide a little bit more context, again, we don't have final fits and finishes, but some of those needs that were discussed through the needs assessment, the Friends of Little Crump Creek Park are going to have storage, they're going to have access to water with a hose reel and hose bib. And the structure also includes a number of other amenities that Swatmoreans would request as standard equipment, common sense things like LED, energy-efficient lighting, timed lights, there will be timed access with a timed lock, so there will be hours of operation for this structure, it won't be in use non-stop. And of course, not only does this support our volunteers and the very important they were, the very important work they do in the parks, but this also negates the need for having to drop off a porta potty and pay for a porta potty for every single event that we're hosting there at the park. So that's all I have. Oh, I'm sorry. Finally, Susan Kelly also provided a, the Friends of Little Crump Creek Park annual report, which is required by resolution. And most notably, there will be some sewer lining redone in the park, which should have a minimal impact on the park's operations, but it is hypothesized that the gazebo will be removed from the park as a part of this work. We, we heard very different reactions before, a lot of people seemed really excited, so.
Perhaps there's a result.
Perhaps there's a, a community discussion to be had there.
Not here, not now. All right. Jared, are you meeting this month?
Yes, we are going to be meeting on the twentieth at nine AM.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, second public comment period of the evening. Would anyone like to come up and make a public comment? Yes, I think, Robin.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Robin Schaffler, twenty-one Oberlin Avenue. While you were talking about the potential overlay zone in, along Yale Avenue, it occurred to me that if it became mixed use for professional offices, then the borough could consider changing the zoning in Town Center to not include professional offices and that that could contribute to the revitalization and the vibrancy of Swatmore Town Center. Like, there's a, there's a, an interaction there. And I, like, I haven't thought this through, this is just something that dawned on me during the discussion, so I just thought I'd throw it out there so that people could think about it and, you know, maybe throw it away, but at least you could think about it. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Robin. Who else for public comment?
Hello, my name is James Peyton Jones from two-eleven Rutledge Avenue. And first, I'd really like to thank you all for the substantive and thoughtful discussions that you've had this evening and also the, the prior work of Scarlet's Committee. I think we as nearby residents feel really hurt in this, in this matter and that you're really taking on board to try and solve what is a quite a complex problem. As you think about some of the ideas that have been discussed this evening, I would personally like you to sort of highlight and remember two sort of key things. One really was Cindy's point, that what we're trying to do is enhance the residential nature of this area. That's how it's currently zoned and that's what we want to enhance and improve, possibly by incorporating sort of more affordable, more dense housing. What we really don't want to see, or at least I personally don't want to see, is increased commercial activity as an unfortunate side effect of, of, of not thinking through the issues too carefully. And the other point that Ganna pointed out concerning height, as a residential area, we want to preserve the residential look and feel of this region and clearly that would be destroyed if you permitted large, large buildings to take place. So I think, you know, we would prefer to see sort of residential use rather than mixed use, although I hear the arguments about the financial viability and certainly we want to preserve the, the scale of that area. Thank you very much again for your thoughtful work.
Thank you. Who else? Yes, I see a hand.
Good evening, my name is Joel Marcus on the eight oh one Yale Avenue in Stratton, New Carmel. I would like to just briefly say that I would like to support our manager, Terry May, in in the, and appreciate very much your positive consideration of working on a proposal to get a grant for Riverdale of the, helpful with the storms or management. It's a huge problem. And I would just like to just mention one thing that I think will give you a perspective on it. If you're driving down Yale Avenue from above the, above the condos, you'll see that Yale Avenue, Hartford Avenue, and all of the driveways and lots, all of them are channels and funnel water down the street, down Yale Avenue. They end up on Yale Avenue. So occasionally, there's water and, you know, it's manageable and we can take care of it. But with the way storms are coming and so forth, I'm sure you appreciate just exactly what it could look like. It's a heavy, a heavy rain. And we've worked with the borough very closely on a lot of other issues. And we tried working with the state, you know, with the state highway. I understand it's one of the most complicated multi-jurisdictional areas. But the bottom line is that there's a huge amount of water that's coming down that Yale Avenue. And we need those inlets to help us get rid of it. Can say from that now. So thank you for supporting, those of you who do support the approach for the, the work. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else for public comment? See a hand back there.
I'm Mary Ann Huzell. I live at 620 Yale. I live right across from the Center. I just want to say thank you for listening to us, just like James said. Like, I feel like you're hearing us, you're taking your time to, you know, look at all the options. I also want to second James's comment about residential. If we really want to keep it residential, like, I don't, I don't want any type of commercial to, like, creep in there. So we can really consider residential use of it. And the height is a huge issue, which I had not really thought about. Like, I really don't want something that's, like, you know, three stories tall. I just want something that's kind of residential height. That's all. But thank you very much for listening to us.
Thank you. Others for public comment? Yes.
Hi, Franklin Kenny for the Swatmorean, address 321 Park Ave. Quick question. I see y'all are retiring to discuss purchasing 630 Yale Ave. When will we have the results of that meeting?
I don't know that there's an answer. It depends on what's discussed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Lynn, come on up.
Hi, Lynn Falk, 223 Kenyon Avenue. I may be coming late into this discussion, but there was some mention of environmental concerns at 630 Yale. And just wanted to put it out there that we've lived there 19 years. And there have been a handful of times over the years where the fumes or odors of paint come across Umoja Park. It's caused me concern. It's caused me to shut my windows and, you know. I haven't reported that. But if we cannot prevent it from becoming another auto body shop, can the borough please create greater environmental protections for the air and maybe for the waste?
Thank you. Others for public comment? All right, seeing no more hands, we will close out the second public comment section of this meeting. Next up, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
I have nothing this month. I gave everything last month, so I have nothing left.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Borough Manager, Will, do you have?
Yes, good evening, thank you. So before I get into the grant discussion, I'd like to, I've already informed council, but we were awarded another grant. We were, we were the only, say only, Delaware County community to receive the Harley Grant. And in the amount of $388,560, that money will be utilized to modernize the traffic signals at Chester and College. So that's where that money's going. So on to the grant topic. I'll be, next week, I'll be asking for consideration to move forward with this. Last year, Terry, myself, Representative O'Mara, our engineer, their engineer, and Pendott met on the site. So yes, it is a state, it is state work. And that was my argument. However, I couldn't win that argument because since we're a borough, the state will not maintain the inlets. Once that order gets into the ground, it's our problem to deal with. They'll clean them off, but they'll do no more. Like many areas in the borough, well, I won't say many areas. Like some areas in the borough, there's inadequate stormwater. So this, the small sewer and water grant through T C D will allow us to do stormwater improvement, stormwater inlet improvements in this area. The proposed work is plus or minus $200,000 with a 15% match on our end. I've spoken with Representative O'Mara's office. And she's also spoken with Pendott. Both, both of them would write a letter of support for this application. So Pendott, Pendott doesn't generally do that. But they said they would write a letter of support for this application. And General Matters Office will as well. And we will seek the same support from Senator Conner's office. We would also ask that we apply that Terry and the Condo Association provide a letter of support for the application. So basically, what this would do is I had provided you an overview. Well, I've provided you the actual grant document from the Commonwealth. And I provided you an email from Eric outlining the, what, the work movement. So basically, for the public certification, we would improve the two inlets that are already existing. And we would add additional inlets upstream to capture some of that water. So that would, that would really help in that. So I'll be bringing this back next week with a request to proceed. The, I believe the filing date was April of this grant, like in March. I have to look again. You see all these things, I feel like dates get confused. But we won't miss the deadline. That's why we have it for you tonight. We're ready to go on our end as long as, if council authorizes this. Again, with all grant applications, you know, the minimum's 15. I say we put our money where our mouth is. The state likes that. We've been very successful in grant funding by having more skin in the game. And I know that the question is always, well, where will we get that money? And again, with most of these grants, I think we find that we apply for this, we may not hear for a year. The Harley Grant we applied for at the end of 2022. And we just received nothing. So that's where we are sometimes.
So it's a commitment? If we've got the full 200,000, we're, we're, we would go for the full 200?
Yes.
And so that means the, the expense to the borough, the 15% match is $30,000. Or if we're saying we'll match at 20 or 25%, it's at least $30,000.
Correct.
And we don't expect it during budget year 2025. That would be like a miracle. So it's 26 or forward in out of reserves. If we get this money, we have to be kind of keeping a ticker to the side.
Yes, what I would hope for is if the finance authority were to meet at the late end of the year and we have an award bonus, then we would have time to plug it into the 2026 budget. But again, the way these grants work out, sometimes they just, they don't meet by the time we flash in, we don't know. So we could be surprised with this. I mean, they're good surprises to have, but then we try and figure out where this cash comes from. And on the finance side, it's maybe a little bit less than $30,000 if you do the arithmetic, you know, all the way through. But this is why we have a capital reserve, which we have slated to be fully funded at 450,000, or is it 400? 400,000. That's why we have an operating reserve at the highest level that's allowed by our resolutions. And we also have, as we've discussed before, carry forward money from 2024 that, you know, can do things like fund projects that we haven't been able to fund in the past because we haven't had the money. So it's, as the guy who, who said for about two years, well, where are we getting that money? Well, it's good that we've got money to do good things. I'd also like to thank Bill and Public Works. I received, and I think Jared may have received similar constituent input or complaints even. One was on streetlights. I had streetlights running during the day. And I brought that to Bill's attention. And he says, no, that's not a Pico issue. We're in charge of maintenance. They had given us a preliminary list. I'm sure they'll be looking over their heads a little bit more and trying to make sure that we're not putting on the streetlights where the sun shines. So thank you, Bill, for a quick response on that. And there was a drain that, you know, whoop, stormwater, stormwater, stormwater. But there was a drain up near the college that looked terrible. And the constituents sent us pictures. And I sent them on to Bill, like he says, already working on it, already funded. So thank you, Bill. And the, it was funny, I got another complaint about that same one today. It's at the corner of Elm. Yeah. It's in that general area. We have placed a hard rock there. We have a metal pole sticking out of the ground. And guess what? The trucks run the pole over. Trucks run the rock over. So we're going to change that to an in-ground inlet. I believe that's what we're going to. But we're going to fix the problem. So that's where we're going with that. But to go back on grants, with every piece of good news, sometimes we get bad. We had applied for the multimodal grant to do the pedestrian safety upgrades down by the pool. And that grant was not approved. So we will go back to the drawing board on that. I really had hope for that one. Especially since it, it, we, we put in there about the blind citizen. This is the way the kids get to Henderson Field. But, you know, can't let them all, our batting average is, they're pretty good, but.
Can you reply? Set it?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Solicitor?
Thank you. I don't have anything to say.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
Second?
Second.
We are going to.